Okay, I'll call this, uh, council meeting over here. We'll look at the, uh, uh, the most time. And then we'll have to pass, uh, trying to be able to do the place so far.
This place is very, oh, sorry. Don't do the question first, bring the man.
Okay. Thank you, brother.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Talking along the side. Thank you. Uh, first order of business tonight is, uh, Judge, uh, Medlock.
You can do a minute.
Oh, well, Mur, you go ahead and take over the line, huh? Don't bring it in. Don't bring it in. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the minutes for the last meeting?
So, first.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Raise your hand. All right, minutes approved. All right, first order of business tonight, other than the minutes, is going to be a second. It will be Judge Medlock. Uh, Judge Medlock had come before us, uh, in lieu of the fact that, uh, there were some issues with, uh, a couple of employees and, uh, the way they was to be paid and, uh, it's come to our attention and, uh, I think what we had was, uh, one employee was Renee Cooley, that, uh, we get an additional fourteen eighty-four, which basically meant there was no probationary period. Uh, and I think this is something that the judge should discuss with them. And also Natasha Hopper would be paid ten thirty-four on our best upon, uh, might have been discussed with the judge also. So...
And just for the notice of information, that was the amount that was allocated and set for the defendant. It's not one dime more than what was approved by the counsel. So I'm not asking for anything over that since, uh, cancel that significant, uh, uh, course.
So do we have a motion to approve?
Then the salary ordinance is what you need.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to salary ordinance bill to reflect the, uh, figures cited by the judge and the court.
I'll second that. Any others in favor?
First, I'd comment for the judge, uh, or to you. Uh, okay, we're saying in the working people, go in the handbook. If I'm a hard office, I'm not going to be, but if I'm a hard on the county, I don't have to defend no protection of the period?
No, I work for your court. Uh, Judge Newkirk, uh...
It's just a court.
Right, I can't speak for the department. But Judge Newkirk, uh, offered not to, uh, uh, encourage our employees to abide by the terms, but will not be bound by that.
Any other questions? Or we go to a vote? If not, motion was made to approve the salary, revise the salary ordinance to reflect? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Did you attend, sir? Can't say.
No.
Okay. Motion to approve the next one? In any...
Thank you, ma'am.
No. Okay, the next, uh, thing on our, uh, next...
This is just one.
Yes.
While I'm here, uh, just would like to, um, bring to the counsel attention that we have been trying cases and spending money as a result. Unfortunately, as everybody knows, we have heard, uh, within the past couple of weeks, and it was quite expensive, uh, because there was a conflict with the public defender office. I had to appoint outside counsel. Attorney fees and attorney fees were approximately twenty-six thousand. Eliminated some of that and, uh, and approved it somewhere close to twenty-three thousand. The meals for jurors were in the neighborhood of fourteen hundred dollars. Uh, the expenses of the coffers were, I believe, worth twenty-three, maybe twenty-seven hundred. Juror pay was ninety-seven, excuse me. We had an approximate ninety-five hundred dollars left in the pauper account. We had twenty-three thousand more. We wanted to make that and more. Tomorrow morning, we started a new family child on this going trial. So I don't know how long that will last, but it should last two and a days. There was additional, it's going to, um, spoke with, uh, Mr. Clark. He said about, uh, Joe Wable, and determined that there's going to be about ten thousand dollars in, um, professional fees that are going to need to be paid, that will be tendered here shortly. And then in July, we have another murder trial that's currently scheduled to go. Now, the attorney fees will not be, um, anything above what's already been, uh, established because Mr. Hamilton's tried in that case, so he'll be paying by the public defender office. But there will be expenses associated with it, so, um, I will need to be asked before this is coming. Very short.
Are you prepared to like to give us? I know you threw some numbers out there, Judge.
No, I'm not, Mr. Bowen. Um, we will be able to, to, uh, pay some bills, but not all the bills. I can prepare that, uh, and give you a better accounting perhaps at the next meeting. We'll all forward.
So we've got to know what we have to do to pass for the hand here.
And I should have a good idea, um, in about two distant future, of exactly what kind of expenses in time frame we're going to have with respect to the, uh, the additional murder trial.
I have a question. Michelle, uh, and on the second page of the financial report is a section called fund twelve hundred supplemental public defender services.
Mm-hmm.
That's forty-nine thousand dollars in it.
Mm-hmm.
What is that exactly?
Is that the public defender reimbursement fee? I can't, I don't, I don't know. I, the term supplemental doesn't need to...
It's UPP period, I'm assuming it's supplemental.
Used to, they used to pay a part-time person out of it. They used to take some office supply.
I suspect that's the public, public defender reimbursement fee.
What's been reimbursed by the state of Indiana?
No, what's been reimbursed by public, by clients from the public defender's office as part of support costs.
Yeah.
Judge Newkirk, I order...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Judge Newkirk, I order people that are, um, assigned public defenders to reimburse the county, uh, at certain, like fifty dollars for mistakers, hundred dollars for families, or if the financial situation changes or indicated, that may assist in a greater...
Is that a source of funds possibly that we could transfer to?
It is, it is not a s... I don't believe that is a source of funds that you can mandate to be used for pauper returns. It's a source of funds you may want to discuss with Mr. Hamilton, as the chief public defender, as to trying to use some of those funds for that. I mean, basically, the statute has it set up to use those funds, to try to use those funds very similar to the, to the probation. And have, have several things in the public defender office reimbursed and paid out of those funds. Like Michelle said, previous part-time individuals. Think for a while, or maybe do we have some of Charlie Max's?
Yeah.
Salary coming out of that, investigator's salary?
Some office supply.
Comes out of that. If, I think that office or, I mean, I'm one of them, so our office got a new copier. I don't know how much of that, of the new copier paid out of that. So it's kind of like probation user fees. I mean, it might be something we can discuss, but I don't think you can necessarily, I don't think the counsel would simply mandate that it be done.
Okay, that's a question.
I mean, we've got that, we've got the, the sour, the jury pay fund, uh...
Mr. Clark, may I ask?
Which is...
Uh-huh. Counsel, who gets the user, the little...
I don't, I think they're like probation user fees, Judge. I think if, if you get them that standoff like Clark County had, they just sit there. I, I mean, it takes the counsel to appropriate them, okay? But it takes the PD office to ask for them.
I thought the judges ended up with that down there.
No, the judges took it from them and the Supreme Court said you can't take it from them. You got, and that's what, yeah. Good drive. Trust me, you can, you can ask the probation office about it. She can give you the citation that I can't. But no, the Supreme Court said you can't just take it from them. You have to, you all have to go play nice and ask one another and share them. So that's the answer here. There, I, there's also, I noticed on the fund sheet on page three, a jury pay fund that's got fifteen thousand dollars in it. I'm not, I mean, it sounds terrible for me to say I'm not real sure what, what each of these funds all do, but I don't carry them all around in my mind. But there's, there's, I mean, if that's a jury pay fund, that's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, think we look at that to some degree and we'll be able to use that for jury pay. Now, again, it may be an issue on jury pay versus public, uh, pauper, uh, pauper fees. You know, what, if, if the jury pay fund is only paid to juries, well, it will make, we may pay the juries thirty-four thousand dollars out of it, but it's not going to help you with the twenty-three thousand dollar pauper attorney fee.
Well, on the Spangler trial, um, jury paid was ninety-seven hundred.
Ninety-seven, so there, I mean, that's, that's a good job, yeah.
And I assume Oramon will be that much or more.
They've signed it, please, on the one.
Oh, why? Was more than that, I just talked to him a second ago.
Well, that was mine, okay.
Well, I talked, when did you talk to Dustin?
Well, I did talk to Dustin, Bob Hamilton, he went up and saw it like two days after the Spangler trial came back.
I talked to Dustin about four-thirty and he told me as far as he knows, it was still on.
Maybe Bob asked over, I don't know. Or maybe he was thinking, I don't know. My experience, Bob had gone to the neighbor's tree and looked for him inside. So that may help, I don't know.
You may have insight into that.
Worst thing we got is that we made the budget as lean as we could, so we didn't put any excess in there. We're going to have to deal with the true expenses as they come through. And, uh, which is tough with this budget right now.
Well, as, as you go to your credit, I brought it to your attention that most likely there was going to be two murder trials, or you give me probably twice as much as you allocated for the budget the year before, so...
It's always just a shot, isn't it?
It is, it's always a guess, so... You address part of it.
I'll look and get with Michelle, we'll pull out the ordinance on this jury pay fund and see what it's...
See what's going on. And by that time, you may know about this later, and kind of have a better feel.
Exactly.
Dollar number we're going to be looking for, so we can be looking at how we do it and then go find out.
Yeah, let's keep in mind that, just suppose for three years, we're all, we're not even halfway through it and the money's almost going to be with the horrible circumstances, or, or they have some... Anything else, counsel?
I'd like to ask you one more question.
Sure, go ahead.
Judge, you mentioned about, I think we had five pauper attorneys, is that, is that right?
Four.
Four, five. Anyway, whatever...
Uh, we have, we have four, yeah. We have four, three dealing with felonies and one dealing with Mr. Newkirk.
I realize this is war and all the damn, but why did you have to have Spangler put in one of our pauper terms?
Because they told me that there was a conflict in the defender. Uh, I signed what I thought was going to be more, uh, expensive or more time considering the case for the public defender office. And then was advised that because they had that case, they didn't feel appropriate to, uh, accept some, the co-defender. And I think that's probably correct, because Mr. Hamilton took the, he took Mr. Oramon, uh, and then you missed Spangler, who was there, was co-defender, and he...
I don't think that's true, couldn't do that.
Well, and Judge, you may want to talk to him too. I, the problem is, and it's very, it's very fixated problem and problem that I don't always understand. Problem is, part of what it, now that the state of Indiana has developed this program or this process for public defenders across the whole state of Indiana, about two years ago, the Ethics Commission weighed in because of a, of an ethics complaint between some partners of public defenders in the border county, and said, "Well, no, public defenders working all out in one office, even if you're all part-time, the public doesn't know you're not a law firm and all the rules of conflict of interest apply to you just like they apply to a law firm." Which means if you have a con, if, if you have four defendants and you got four attorneys, well, you can, all can't do it because some of them are going to point their fingers at each other.
Yeah, that's exactly what it's happening.
And, and so that's the problem. Now, I can tell you that I would just as soon not go too far out of this room. In March, I don't care. I, I, we, we don't, we, we look at cases like that, and if they're D felonies and sometimes C felonies, then we'll go ahead and at least start the representation and as, if, if a problem develops, then we, we'll address the problem. But at the beginning, we'll keep the cases in house. A felonies, we don't take that chance. If there, if there's, just like, like the case he's talking about, the Oramon and Spangler case. If it's an A felony murder and there's two of them and there's a possibility one's going to point the finger and say, "I was there, but I, he pulled the trigger." The other one looks at the lawyer and says, "Nope, I was there and she pulled the trigger. I didn't love it about it," and then you're immediately in a conflict. And when you're dealing with A felonies and B, and murders, you, as a lawyer, you don't take that ethical chance, you know?
It would have been appropriate.
And I, I don't like to say...
We would have took those two cases.
Yeah, I don't like to say chances, but if they're D felonies and they're not quite as bad and, or C felonies, we'll, we'll start them. And unless somebody really starts arguing about that, we'll, we'll try and proceed with it. We'll get it resolved and go have a...
It wasn't worth your counsel, um, the possibility of, of, of law, possibly, because I'm going to be, and then you'd be without counsel.
And, and...
And I would hate to have to, uh, pay you to try the case twice. I'm sure it'll go on people, but, uh, I don't, we got, we tried them on people.
And, and the problem, Mur, I mean, with what you're raising is, a lot of people around the state, a lot of the offices have been built. We, we, we set this up just like you told us to set it up. And now we got another state agency telling us we can't do it the way the first state agency told us to do it. So we've all learned that issue before, but that's, that's what, that's what's happened.
I mean, even, even though we had to pay outside of court, I genuinely believe we'll, we'll be subject to reimbursement for that. So I think you may get a portion of that.
That is a crucial part.
No, I don't, no, it's through the pauper fee. We don't get any of that back.
You sure?
I'm pretty sure about that.
Because I thought, uh, when we had discussed that back when I was there, that there's a chance.
No, I don't know. I mean, I don't know, I guess I'd have to ask she does all the reimbursement stuff, but I didn't...
You might check, I think, but, so, I thought that we did. The PD office could get that back, even with this, uh, point now.
We're going to talk, we'll, we'll see. I'll, I'll ask her to answer. That'd be from the states what he's, what he's talking about.
In, in worst case, I mean, when I was paid paupers today, did I reimburse?
We do.
I did put the work that I did, and we faced that.
Well, that was there in program, wasn't it? Was that rotated around? See, that's the, that's, that's the thing that concerns me is the difference. But I'll ask basically, I, I carry around my, it's pauper attorney, we're paying, we're paying full freight.
But we did get, uh, five working days, well, yeah. Yeah, it was pretty efficient, man. Yeah, it could have grown out well. Uh, it could have grown out well. But I mean, come out, stay light, and, and that's sort of the light it did.
So you're not taking a look at what we might, this body wise, we're going to be looking at for?
Yeah.
It might be a... Okay. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Yeah. Next item on the agenda tonight is animal control. And I guess what we want to discuss there is, is Randy Lee had come to us at the last meeting, and I believe we were told at that time, John, by the representative, that you all, the commissioners, had kind of taken a look at his request and kind of thought that might be a good idea to do. You come there...
Yeah, the five thousand dollars, but then, of course, that was before we got this thing from the city to this letter. So, I mean...
Well, the letter from the city basically says they would like for us to take over a greater portion of, uh...
Yeah.
Of, uh, shelter.
Well, they want another twenty thousand dollars. So I had a meeting with, saying about this, and we discussed the possibility of, you know, when you have two kind of entities trying to run this thing, there's just a lot of confusion on management and I just, I still say that whether it's us or the city, that it needs to be... Well, we actually talked about having a committee that oversees, not like calling it county or city, or maybe just calling it a county facility, but have a committee that oversees how to run. Because the city has their rules, how long to keep dogs, and, um, we have our rules and it's just, I think it's a little chaos.
So I guess, is there a lot for us to discuss tonight, or is this something we just need to...
I guess we're just going to have to, I mean, any way you look at it, we're going to be paying, whether, we're going to be paying for, whether, whether we form, uh, or it's just one entity that runs it, and we're getting a lot, getting off a lot cheaper than what the city is. But at the same time, I'd still like to see another one umbrella, not two.
So kind of what I understood was that they're not looking for something immediate, but for a state?
Just for mon, for right now monetary.
Yeah.
Which I personally don't have a problem with, because I, I, you know, we're not paying really our fair share of what it costs to run a place.
Well, just a note of comment. Has anybody been to the animal shelter lately?
Oh, I have.
Most of the animals out there belong to the county.
Yeah.
On that business, yeah.
It's seven, yeah, seventy percent of more owns the county, so...
So it's something we certainly need to discuss and take a look at.
I don't know what people in Salem, they could talk about the county, but...
And you know, Mark, Mark, I think that's a point, that is a good point to make.
That's right.
I mean, you're at, probably doing something in the cities, isn't it?
The change in, uh, the process of handling animals out there was a decision by a city employee, wasn't it?
Yes, uh, you know, they used to euthanize the animals in three days and that's been extended to ten. Try to, I think they're working a lot harder to try to find people to adopt these animals, but sometimes it's starting to create a backlog. But I think that, you know, we're trying to meet with the city and come up with a way to just put this all under one umbrella and maybe the city would pay us, but I guess either way, we're still going to spend more money to keep this thing going. I don't think the city wants to spend any more money into it. They're looking, looking at us to pay more of our fair share.
Any other comments?
Well, I think it's an organizational problem to the, I think it's part of it. Do they ever have physical limitations to, uh, facilities? But until the organizational part of it is addressed and centralized into a, more of a common, uh, pattern for it to work without two, two fiction, uh, two fractions banging heads into each other. And that's, I think that's what we've seen here, is that it, it's not going to go away with money. Yeah, it has to be an organizational restructuring on how that department is handling first. Then the will, you know, the money, there's always an issue. And if our percentage by the organizational part of it is that we're seventy percent, then we ought to pay seventy percent. But, you know, until they get together and get the organizational thing, I really don't know if anybody has any desire to own the dollar pound by themselves, you know? There definitely does not need to be two. And the way we may go at this, there could be a possibility of two, and I don't think that is a desire of anybody.
Well, if I understand it correctly, from my discussion with the, not Rick, but the other gentleman out there today, you have, money's coming from the county, money's coming from the city, but you also have a portion of what gets spent out there coming from the Humane Society, where they do a lot as far as the food, providing the food and those kind of things, and a lot of the voluntary help comes from that. So you actually got three entities right now that's involved in that structure out there right now as it is, so...
I think it's just more common, I go up to Harrison County and I tour theirs, is usually it's either a city or a county facility, not half and half. So I think it definitely needs to come to that, and I, Mayor Farrel wasn't opposed to the idea, you know? And he thinks we need to, if we do that, we need to just have a, some type of a representation on a committee from the city and the county to help oversee it. Like Harrison County spends a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars on their shelter. We're probably between what we're paying, we're not, city pays sixty, fifty-two, I don't know. I'm not sure if that's all there. Probably close, and it looks like we're putting about, combined about a hundred and twelve.
And Harrison's a hundred and thirty-eight thousand?
Hundred and thirty-two is what they told me.
And, and their volume of animals is considerably four dollars.
Yeah.
And we've got to pay the work up for ours, but this is probably going to be the one worst year for me. There's a budget time for us, with rain shirts, covers, making, being able to make that and all the expenses. I guess I'm under, just how important is it in the county? I, I never get told that, uh, a dog or who get, uh, how important is it? Don't catch an account for better or...
Well, I think the only thing that, the one realistic thing that I'm concerned about is where the, the health department with rabid dogs and stuff like that. You know, I, that's, that's where I see as far as the county, the huge concern. There's strays, you know, now, and of course, I'm used to strays out in the country, you know, seeing that type of...
Well, I do, I do.
But I don't...
I don't know if they're any better if we had a counter person. And then I, I have one message to be about everybody. Yeah, he does have a range, hey? But that's another thing, it's my responsibility if I have a dog, is it not, to keep that dog on a leash or under the collar. Maybe I'm up on that end, be a little more stronger. Mark, what, where's the executive body come in there and, and?
Well, you, you've got a, yeah, you, you, you have a couple of, of county ordinance and a state law regarding controlled animals.
That's probably what you would drop.
I mean, it's, that's there, wouldn't go from three to about, uh, ten days, that's really of the population, hasn't it?
Well, I heard thirty days at one time, was that?
I never heard it go that far.
I mean, you know, for some reason, I'm thinking that ten days, what you're talking about was one that would be under fourteen. I know they, the gentleman spoke with me the other day, which really wouldn't be in a position to make decisions, but, um, the three day was there, and yes, they thought that animal had a chance of being reclaimed by its owner, they did add some days to it. I don't think, it was mentioned to me, and maybe I should've been talking to Rick Stewart, who said, well, I was talking to him, and I thought they said, which they could've been more clear about what has been defined to them, but, you know, quarantine days is X, and I don't know if that's ten or twelve days, but I know it's ten days, that's required by law for them to be held. But it's certainly something that the issue's not going to go away, because the city is gonna continue pushing it, because they're saying that we're utilizing it for the county animals, and Mark made this point, careful about what I thought. Of course, those dogs might be coming from Mark, and, uh, so anyway, is this something we can safely say here this evening to kind of close this out, that you all be working on that and be directing us as to what you think? You might want us to consider in the future?
That's correct.
And what do I, I think it went down from a thousand, a hundred and forty dollars. And it's picking on one that handled the trees.
Okay, so. It's not new, of course, mouse and rubber in the shell, and I need for somebody to, you know. And maybe that we have an animal, animal control committee, you know, to dislike some of our other ones, but I just, I just think we need to have a uniform set of rules, not city.
I guess my point, I'll go with the Humane Society, they're a big part of running and care of that facility. I would certainly want those people involved in any of the discussions and decisions.
Isn't maybe you have the president there?
Yeah.
I think she still is, but I think somebody's gonna be taking over for her, if that's what you're asking. All right, if there's no further discussion to be had here, we'll move on to, uh, additional appropriations. And, uh, Michelle, help me out here just a little bit, we have, uh. So we need to, since we done that, uh, resolution there for the payday, we need to appropriate the money for that, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'd have to appropriate that fourteen eighty-four. Uh, back pay, which, would we have to reappropriate this? Oh, it's from last year. Yeah, from last year, we'd have to do that, so we need to do these one at a time, and?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'm looking for a motion to, uh, approve an appropriation for the fourteen hundred and eighty-four dollars for the circuit court back pay. Dawson makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Taken by Mark for.
Yep.
Mark. All those in paper, signify by raising your right hand. Okay, next, uh, appropriations is kind of a devil, do we need to do these individually?
No, you can do this, the sheriff.
I started saying we have two different dis- yeah, we have, uh, two different, uh, occasions where there was increases, uh, and I guess, was that in a prosecutor's pay that, uh, weren't, weren't the sheriff getting, uh, an increase of eight hundred and forty dollars on two different occasions in the last?
Well, no, it's for this time, the prosecutor's pay went again, so the sheriff's pay is going up sixteen hundred and eighty dollars.
Okay.
And his salary is split.
Oh, split it too, so this is just.
Jay don't get the attention, so.
Okay. So we can do these together then, so do I have a motion to approve the sheriff's salary, or appropriate money for the sheriff's salary increase?
I'll make that a motion.
Do I have a second? I think we gotta have a second, I was sort of mandated the law here.
Well, I'll, I'll make a comment out there in public, just for verification. This was, uh, uh, done by the state as far as prosecuting attorneys increase, and the sheriff's salary is, in retrospect, adjusted according to the prosecuting attorney's salary, so even though this looks like a, uh, a salary increase in two, uh, two of them, and one here, it is, but it's mandated from the state on that. So we're kind of bound on that, and we have to follow suit.
So do I have a second?
I'll say.
Oh, I got a second down there, thank you. All those in paper, signify by raising your right hand. All. Okay, now, if I understand correctly on this next appropriation. Yeah, on the cum bridge.
That's where you loan the money from the Edith fund to the cum bridge.
And we need to appropriate that.
Into the line item.
Into the line item, yes. So do I have a motion to make that move for the appropriation into the line item?
I have a question first, I want a motion to act to drive. Uh, we're not gonna eventually take any money out of Edith's. The money will be, we'll get the money back.
Yeah.
Yes, so, so we're not gonna short Edith's dollars, any money.
Yeah, no, right.
The only thing that I see, Merv, as far as talking about this, the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is basically going to complete what the two thousand and twelve funding we have for a cumulative bridge fund. We're doing a little shuffling around with money on the budget wise, but the reality is, is that because we are paying a past debt on Bridge One Thirteen, we're basically then pulling in out of budget funds for two thousand and twelve cumulative bridge fund. So that, even though we're doing this, uh, sandbagging, throwing sand back and forth, the ultimate result, the reality is, is that we have zero in the cumulative big, uh, bridge fund for two thousand and twelve, because we are actually paying a past debt.
Well, was Randy in there, uh, in the year where we did the coverage? Or said one over the man too? It wasn't kind of.
Okay. So what is that, what is that?
Balance us.
We appropriated it, we appropriated our money, they cut it, we didn't appeal it, and now we make.
For two thousand and twelve, that's for two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, I thought. Into the bridge fund.
So my question was, are we shorting yet a dollar?
No.
Not shorting yet a dollar?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Second. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
And the bill seconds it. All those in paper, signify by raising your right hand. We have all. Okay, now, if I understand this next one correctly, we can appropriate this money, this extra money that we got. Edith money is the windfall we got from the state on the Edith monies, and, uh, I think, uh, what we're looking at here is, uh, uh, that we would be putting sixteen thousand five sixty-three into the twenty.
Yeah.
The twenty-five percent of the economic development, and we would, uh, appropriate the other forty-nine thousand six hundred and ninety-one dollars into Department of Road Projects, as capital outlay. Do we want to appropriate this money that way? Is there any discussion we want to have before we ask, call for a vote? Any questions?
I make a motion that we approve the, uh, proposed, uh, appropriation of the, uh, county economic development in context of the extra money. Yeah, twenty-five and seventy-five.
We have a motion by Doc Mancher, do we have a second?
I'll make that.
I need a second. Is there any discussion, you guys were having some discussion, is there anything worth a comment here?
Yeah, we did, sorry, what we already passed.
We, we did, we're just appropriating the monies that we got. We made a new motion to move that over, but this money, we haven't appropriated yet.
Yeah.
And that's what we're doing tonight.
Yeah.
So we have, uh, we totally, okay. Ray, rank for all those.
Explain, explain again what you're doing then.
We got the, I'm just giving the Edith money from the state here.
Okay.
Because it went into the fund, I would give it to again, that's the money split.
What was, what was the dog pound?
It was sixteen, five sixty-three for the twenty-five percent. And twenty-nine, six ninety-one for road projects. So, yeah, you'll need to talk to Tom, and all of them work that into the Edith plan somehow.
So that's additional funds that were not spent from?
Right.
Two thousand and?
Right.
Now, I sense moving the city.
Oh.
By mistake, where they had paid a miscalculation on what they were distributing to us.
Okay.
Okay? And I'm not so sure that was part of your, uh, your, uh, resolution you done for your Edith.
Okay, I do, yeah, we do need to put that in your plan here.
But you can discuss that. Okay, Ray, rank of that, all those in paper, signify by raising your right hand. Merv, did you have a draw, or is? Okay, all those, uh, what we have accounted, so, five here, we have Dawson, they, Randall, all those in papers? Show your hand. Okay, we got it.
Can I, Dave, are we going to do this one here? I have got a serious question.
On which ones, that, Dave, we're gonna do about it?
Well, you know, I've got a puzzle sitting here that just doesn't match up.
Excuse me, Dave, let's go into other business, and let's discuss about here.
Go on.
We're ready. Well, let's, do we want to discuss them, sir?
So we're ready for this?
Yes, yes, that's what I said, okay, we're ready.
Are we, are we ready for this?
Yes.
Explain this to me, okay? I've got last year's, I mean, last month's budget sheet on this cumulative bridge fund, bridge fund. It says minus ninety-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-three. We go into this month, and the cumulative bridge fund is a hundred and ninety-nine, one seventy-nine, oh, seven. And you just brought in a hundred and ninety-three in that, and?
Yes, but you don't have this back to you. And they can cover it in the next year.
Yeah, you, you're, you're.
Yeah, I mean, see, it's a year once a year, and they're always bringing in cover.
And so that, that comes in there in a Texas figure here.
Yes.
Now, that hundred thousand, it would just, did it go back in here, so we obviously just now actually increased into this? Okay, so we are already in it?
Yeah, with that hundred thousand already in there.
Okay, so, okay, there's not additional hundred thousand, the hundred thousand is in this figure.
Exactly.
Okay.
Plus these two.
Yes.
And some funds we gotta pay the mid, if that's.
All right, all right.
All right, is that sure about, I understand that?
All right, I, what their discussion was, was we had, last month, we were at minus ninety-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars on the cumulative bridge fund. And we have had additional funding since come in, and there are a hundred and ninety-three, two ninety-seven, point oh four. But we've got a seedment and a cover reimbursement, and we don't particularly see that that into that, plus the hundred thousand dollars that we just moved from the Edith back into that. So that made our balance for this month in the positive of a hundred and ninety-nine, one seventy-nine, twenty-seven. But the way I was looking at it, I could not figure out how those figures were moving to get to there, but even though our motion just happened, that hundred thousand dollar figure is in our figures now. We don't have another hundred thousand dollars going in, it is a hundred and ninety-nine after what we just did in there. So that, uh, I was kind of concerned about, you know, my motion to add that hundred thousand, if we were gonna see a two ninety-nine amount, but now, what we do is already in this figure here, even though we just made the motion to approve.
I have a question about the start of this problem. When the state sent a, we'll keep sending two notes, that said they were cutting the appropriation for the cum bridge. Did they cut payment, or did they cut the rate? Well, if, 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 if we had rates that should've brought in more money than they allowed us to have, where did that money go?
I got some seventeen minutes over here, I was digging it up.
Well, does it say the cost now, though?
I think two thousand eleven is when they done the cut, this is two thousand twelve. Before we got, kind of, though, for a loop in my mind is.
That's right, it's two thousand eleven.
It was two thousand, it was February two thousand eleven, it come in from the state with that cut in there.
It still goes into the fund. They just can't spend it, because it's not budgeted.
So we actually have money that's been paid to the taxpayer sitting in the fund, and we can't spend it, because the state said we can't spend it even if the taxpayer paid it.
Well, and right there's what's in your fund, a hundred and ninety-nine thousand.
I'm not sure I understand. I'm not at my best right now.
Right.
The problem wasn't, yeah, that was in the rear, the problem wasn't, the, the problem that started this isn't that, that the state cut us, that somewhere, the, I mean, I don't want to throw jokes, but somewhere we, the county highway or the county built a bridge, and we didn't pay the bill for it.
In two thousand ten, if I'm not mistaken.
In two thousand ten or whenever, and the bill just finally came in, and nobody agreed, and nothing.
The state said, no, you can't do that.
Well, we didn't, I'm not even sure we put it in the budget.
I think that we, I think it was, I think it was by commissioners, I think they put it in there.
Well, they did.
We, we did not, I guess that when it come to the point when it was cut out, we didn't challenge it for a reason that it was in there for. I don't know if we could've won that or not, but we didn't challenge it because we didn't understand what, and what that amount was, you know, it was put in there extra by the commission.
What area you talking, Dave? Talking two thousand eleven budget?
The correct. The two thousand and ten commissioners put the budget together with the intentions to pay the debt for One Thirteen in the cumulative bridge fund.
Well.
I officially had it in there at one point, and I spent it, and then they got through, and it just got, and I don't, I just kind of.
got it and it just got, and I don't, I just kind of...
It used on another project. It just got used on another project. I mean, I think, I think we're just paying off a tax bill and it's just emptying out the Q bridge fund.
Which just means you've got extra amount of money to deal with bridges on.
That's right.
For the year.
And now we're having to come up here, money out of the, we're going to end up loaning from the edit money into the Q bridge money, money to pay that debt off. When they get their settlement, they're going to end up paying back the debt, which means they're not going to have for the rest of this year or probably next year very much money in the Q bridge fund to replace bridges.
It's gone.
Finally, we will raise the rate for the Q bridge fund next year.
Well, I think that's, you had some discussion at the last meeting and there, there you go. I mean, if you want to, if you want to raise rates for the, for the bridge fund, there's, there's, you know, some very specific steps you're going to have to take and, and hold some public meetings and give notice of that to the, to the DGOF.
Plus we're shifting, with the shift then, you go to the bridge instead of something else.
Well, overall, under your complete levy, that's exactly right. If it will have an effect on what, what you're raising in your other funds. I mean, we can levy up to ten cents per hundred for the bridge fund. We're not, we're not anywhere near that. I'm not saying you want to go anywhere near that, but if you have, I mean, by that term, that's what you should do. But if you, if you want to raise it, we have to, we have to take some actions before August second. And some of those actions are public notice, and public notices and, and public meetings.
I make a motion, we take whatever actions necessary to raise the bridge fund rate next year. And if it has to be done by August second, then we need to get moving.
Make a motion, do we have a second?
My second.
How much you get to raise it?
How much do we need to raise it?
We don't know.
I think that'll be discussed later.
That goes back to the bridge inspector, doesn't it? County bridge inspection?
No, it goes back to simply how much you want to put in that fund for the...
Well, it goes back to what the...
We need to, we need to raise the hundred thousand at least more than what we've raised now to pay back the edit fund and get it back even. I don't know what, how many pennies on the hundred it takes to raise a hundred thousand dollars, but we at least have them.
A penny raise about eighty-seven. Mark, do you want to table that motion for right now or at our next meeting?
No, because after, you can do it after August second.
We're going to do it now.
Well, if you, you can do it after August second, but it won't take place until physically year two thousand fourteen. If you want it to take place in two thousand thirteen, you're going to have to say you do it tonight and start over to try to cram it in.
So what's our assessed value?
It's about eight hundred and seventy thousand.
Maybe?
Eight hundred and seventy. Not seventy, through cash. That's for two thousand twelve, it was about eight seventy-seven.
What's our rate right now?
The rate right now?
Remember, you carry around your wallet, what's our rate right now?
No, it's not that bad, but I think, I think it's...
Point zero three five zero.
Zero three five zero.
The assessed value is eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand four hundred and nineteen thousand two oh four.
For what? So what penny rate do they, eighty-seven thousand thirty-five? Well, that's what we're looking at here. We have to know what we do here, and I was hoping somebody'd bring that up, that if we raise this rate, we have to...
If you raise the rate, it's going to affect your county general, absolutely. Absolutely. Because under the levy, you're only, your, your total levy, you're only allowed to raise so much. And, and you get about two and a half percent increase per year.
Well, we can't have a bridge's cost, you know?
I'm not, I know that, Mark.
But this, the, I'm going to refer back to, if I can, to John. As far as you, giving your budget estimate for the cumulative bridge fund, does it come from the inspector of what he sees as needs for maintenance?
I, I think it's always just been what we spent in the past.
What the department wants to do on a project from year to year, basically.
Yeah, yeah. Well, if there's something that we know, but I know that the last bridge inspection, the one bridge that we're working on is up there by Dex Mill, that concrete one, but I think all the bridges besides that one, now this doesn't count the covers, you know, the small ones that, there wasn't anything noted on anything else that made repairs.
Two thousand twelve budget. In the two thousand twelve budget, we done thirty thousand for covers. We done twenty-one thousand for repairs, and I guess that's repairs in general. And bridge inspection was thirty thousand, approach paving was ten, that, had that. But then we also, Bridge eighty-three had ninety thousand dollars budgeted for it. So apparently somebody looked at that and done a price or what it costs to repair that bridge or do whatever it needed to be done to that particular something. And then on Bridge two, uh, two hundred and nine, we done another ninety thousand for that bridge. Okay? That was your ultimate for two thousand twelve. Now, what's going to suffer is, is we just moved that money in to take care of that past something from two thousand ten or whatever unbeknownst to myself, maybe somebody else knew about that and I didn't know about, but I think the others did. But what's going to suffer is at the end of the day, we're going to pay back the money out of this budget here, once somebody's received back to edit, and then something in this budget is going to suffer this year, you know? So I would suggest to you all that you take a good look at what you've budgeted, see how necessary those repairs are, and make a decision about what you guys would like to do about continuing the, I don't know what Bridge eighty-three looks like, I don't know what Bridge two thousand nine looks like, but there's ninety thousand on one, ninety-one thousand on the other. If it's something you can hold off another year and then redo your budget for two thousand thirteen, you'll be back on a break-even basis, if that can be done. If it can't be done out of necessity, we do not want our bridges to fail and suffer, okay? I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, but if we have to, to make a, I don't know how you guys want to handle this, if we want to do what Mark has suggested tonight, that we increase, we're just taking that money out of something else to compensate for this. So I don't know if we want to do...
What if we did that and didn't need as much as we thought? Can we not transfer funds? Because I guess, I usually can't really do that unless you, when you do the appropriation, you're, you're still going to be taking it out of something else.
Mark, are we stuck with that rate then the next following year? Or is this by rate every year? If we raise that...
If we raise the rate and that will leave, and it, it gets approved by DGOF and there's not remonstrance against it, then that would be our rate. And that would be the rate. That could actually come back maybe to the two thousand thirteen budget and what they deferred this year, put that into budget and raise the amount of money they want to raise into this cumulative fund. It can go with that, and that would raise that rate, obviously, but they would also adjust it someplace else. And we might be able to live with that. So it could go through the budget process is what I'm saying, and you still be covered in one month.
Well, I know at the last meeting, Gerald was there and you were there, he was very concerned that we didn't have any money and, and he, he thought it was extremely important we, we can't leave that with a zero balance. But how much, how much we can squeak by with, I don't know, you know, what dollar figure that would be. I wish Gerald was here tonight.
You know, we, we took the edit money and we put it out. So this cumulative bridge fund has a balance of a hundred ninety-nine thousand, but the edit money, where did it come from? If, where was that edit money going to be spent on? Is it going to be blacktop? Growled?
You're talking about the twenty-five percent?
No. The twenty thou, the hundred thousand dollars of edit money, what is going to suffer from that? Is it going to be blacktop? Is it going to be growled?
Can we not take that full amount of the state is paying us and allocate?
You got sixty-nine thousand dollars we appropriated tonight. So we've got paid any deal. Okay, that's edit money, you didn't think we had to...
Right, what if we put that for the bridge? Q bridge. I mean, that wouldn't get it all, but at least it'd be, then, then time would pass right all this way.
Yeah, look at...
I guess you put it in the...
If that was such a money, you could even donate it back.
So what?
Do we bother with this?
I don't know what I'm thinking, but I thought it should go in the...
Okay, that's, maybe he's got figured out. That's what I'm getting at, I'm not sure. Hundred percent. In it for roads from great to more friends, one thousand three hundred and forty-five.
Hundred yards.
Okay. Okay. Okay, we're ready, John. We had a motion, we have a second on this, to raise the rate.
The raising of the rate will not be permanent, that's Dave's question. We can change that back anytime we want, at any budget time we can.
Well, what I would say is we be, be changed that rate for two thousand thirteen. What I'm saying is just a pure function of the budget, depending on what they put in that they want to do, will automatically change that rate if a big one.
The Q bridge fund, you set the rate, you have to go through specific steps to set that rate.
Okay, yeah, to that reason.
And, and it's, it was not just simply that you budget X amount and then you let DGOF do it.
When we do all this, we kind of have to know what we're going to change the rate to, don't we?
That's correct. Because in your public notice, you're going to have to show the increase.
So if we follow through tonight, we have to know what we're going to change the rate to.
About rate two.
But we do have a, actually, what, three percent or so, that kind of is in the picture, I guess, but overall.
Over it.
We're allowed...
Yeah, I, I know what you're saying.
... amount we're allowed, but still, taxpayers can't stand any more money coming out of the pocket. I still think the inspector comes into this because the inspector wanted to ask the commissioners on what to do. And now, for what we got the inspector for, great inspector. I wonder if I go to my house, somebody said, go down and do it, and they come down and did it. Hell, I'm afraid there ain't any better. Get it, they're out, hold up two now, I guess. Now, that is going to go. Some of the federal, the federal specs, that has a great...
All right. A one, a one point two will get your hundred thousand.
Okay, here's what, uh, I'll focus my attention. We have fifty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars of edit money that we did spend, that we put into the edit plan for, that we can use on bridges for this year, two thousand twelve. And we can take the extra money that the state is sending us. I don't know if we can take the whole sixty-four, given that...
Everybody's sending.
So I'm looking at the bridge, it was one Gerald's deal, and the bridge, and all Scarlett that bridge deal came up, they had like a hundred seventeen thousand in that bridge fund.
Yeah.
And she just backed plus the other hundred, if I had two point five, that a few dollars more. That's what I heard she did. So basically this figure, they got a hundred ninety-seven thousand, is actually they've got ninety thousand dollars. You say they actually have ninety thousand dollars going in this year?
Yeah.
The hundred thousand is not going over because that edit fund, right?
Yeah, it's, it's put into this big...
Plus you got ninety plus fifty-seven.
Right.
So it's got a hundred forty-seven, so it's twenty-five over what he started with at the beginning year from the eyes of...
But he had budgeted in there around two hundred and...
I'm sure, yeah, that's what he was trying to add, so he had a whole bunch of covers and stuff like that for him. He saw really all that far away.
Yeah. Now, I guess if you were to want to make a, if you wanted this far as figure, if you were to do a tax rate, it would be one point two, would generate a hundred and five thousand in there.
Well, it sounds to me like we don't need to do it, though. If they've got fifty thousand that they're not spending, and you, and you got, they just gave forty more tonight, that's almost a hundred thousand there.
Yeah, I think that he's going to have to pinch...
And give him the whole sixty, they would be all right.
Yeah. He's going to have to, from the original budget, it's going to be down a little bit from his bridge on the body, it's going to get a lot closer.
I would run my motion.
I'll accept that two as a second.
Seven oh two.
Do we need to go back to this allocation on there, or is that at the discretion of the commissioners to do with the...
The edit money?
Yeah.
That's, that's always, you know?
Tom says we have the authority. Yeah, I mean, twenty-five, seventy-five, has been a, has been a consensus of how it's ended now. So if you want to say some arbitrary procedure, if you want to tell, simply tell the commissioner's representative that it would be your consensus to go ahead and use, not to, to go ahead and use the, uh, the sheet that you just approved, the full sixty-six, two fifty-four, and to not have the sixteen thousand be separated out into the twenty-five percent, you could do that. Okay, I'm going to ask for a consensus to do what Mark just said.
Do we need consensus or do we need votes?
I just said you could do it by consensus, but if you want to do it for a vote, make your motion. Make your motion to, to withdraw or to, to make your motion to cancel the appro, the division in appropriations that you just made on the sheet, budget form four A regarding county economic development.
I'll make the motion that we withdraw that and that we use the full, uh...
Stop right there. Just make your motion to withdraw.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Jump in, Murrow.
I'll say it. All those who want to raise your right hand?
Now, Dave, do you want to make another motion?
Yeah, I make over the...
Okay, stop.
Yeah, yes, yes, why ever?
What did we just do?
We just put in that.
So I need to put deny on that.
Yeah, you, it's right there.
Okay, my, uh, my motion is that this extra money sent from the state on the county calculation error, instead of it being split off for the seventy-five, twenty-five on our economic development, since it's edit money, I make the motion that the full amount go back towards the road projects and to the cumulative bridge fund.
Well, it just goes to road projects.
Road projects, we're trying to take care of that, back the road projects on. Road projects, we'll try to take care of that, back the road projects on.
Okay, just, just stop. Okay, we have the additional. Put sixteen thousand in the twenty-five percent line and forty-nine thousand in the paving line. So, now, you're telling me, you still want, you just want the sixteen thousand to go to the paving line?
Right.
Well, then that's just a tran- that's, yeah, that's a simple transfer.
Yeah.
But you're not putting twenty-five percent in there? That can't be valid, right?
You're not, we're not taking any of the, we're not taking any of the money that the state has, just this month, sent to the, to the county. We're not putting any of that into the twenty-five percent portion of the economic development income tax fund. We're like, we're putting all of that into the road projects fund. And the commissioners can then their edict plan to pay sixty-six thousand of that and put it into, make that bridge as part of your road project.
You got my second.
But then you can't without an additional. You've gotta get the money from the funding line, so the additional has to stay.
Get into the fund. I have no disagree with that. So, if you wanna, if you wanna show your minutes as that, the additional was approved, but the additional would be approved so that all the money goes to road projects and not the sixteen thousand.
Okay, I agree with that.
That's what I said.
You got a second, Mr. Chairman?
I know. I wish I'd just had a consensus and I would ask for a vote, but I'm gonna ask for a vote right now. All those in favor? Okay. I don't know if you were just ready to open or not, okay. Oh. So, basically, we've got that function done.
And it's your decision at this point not to raise the rate on the bridge, correct?
Correct.
My understanding is that.
Well, we're, we're taking it, that's my problem.
Is there any other business that we need to bring before the council tonight, as this board, before I go to the audience?
What are you doing for what?
These folks out here.
Oh, well, well, Tim's in the room, too.
Yeah, I'm gonna let Tim explain that, or I'll give him the credit.
Well, I got one, 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 you know, we've been talking about the nine-one-one. I have found out that we have to, we are gonna have to create a whole new fund number. So, the one-one-five-three, um, is gonna cease to exist, and July first is gonna become a new fund number. Now, there's questions about whether or not you all are gonna have to redo additionals to take the money from the old nine-one-one into the new nine-one-one and appropriate, and, and each one that line adds again, I'm not sure. So, you're July, you may have a bunch of additions.
And that'll be on the new set of that.
Yeah, just four more.
Does everybody understand what Michelle's saying here tonight about that nine-one-one thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, any other business at this table before I go?
Yeah, I'd like to make a, on the, uh, we did the, uh, Blue River cleanup as far as debris removal with a USDA grant, seventy-five twenty-five. Um, to just give you an update as far as our county portion of that, and we're still in the process of finishing those forms up and submitting up for reimbursement, uh, on the contract that was accepted. Um, the county put together basically thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-nine cents worth of expenses. Um, our original twenty-five percent was gonna be sixty-one thousand dollars. Uh, we tried to make it as much up in physical equipment, labor, and rock. Uh, we're gonna be about twenty-one thousand short of, uh, meeting the physical, uh, financial obligation of that.
But was that figure again?
Sixty-one thousand was our portion of that twenty-five percent. Um, the only way that I see to make that up is make a cash, uh, balance up on that, because basically, the work was done on bid price, which was around two forty-seven thousand, two hundred forty-seven thousand dollars. So, physically, we made up almost forty thousand of it, but we're short about twenty-one thousand on our physical part.
So, our portion was sixty-one thousand?
Yeah.
And we done an end kind of about forty-one thousand?
About forty thousand, it was thirty-nine seven seventy-five, almost forty. Uh, the work's been done, the contract was bid on that, the physical get the work done. It was done, uh, by the temple, you know, to get that work done, as far as the seeding. Within the project in there, we put in there seeding, disking, and chiseling, you know, as far as the land reclamation and that. Uh, very, very little work was done by the, uh, farmer or landowners on it. It was done by temple as far as doing the grazing and the seeding and all, and the completion of that, so. Uh, my recommendation would be to the commissioners or to this body as far as the, the accounting, that the twenty-one thousand needs, that we need to make up on our end kind, we do have to turn up at that twenty-five percent. We've got physical figures of equipment and man hours and employees, but we have to turn up with twenty-one thousand more dollars in cash for our part.
Dave, uh, one other little small area that I mentioned to you there on sixty-four, I seen one of the David forgotten what's that, but is there anything in there for those?
No, there won't, the only, well, the small project was Bear Creek, which was on the other side of one thirty-five. Uh, it, those projects we were talking about, they weren't designated in that pattern, that three-mile pattern. That was designated by the NRCS, uh, for this, uh-
I told them that.
Yeah. It didn't get added into it.
It's pretty minor, but we had a flood, I can see the work.
Well, in the process of doing all that job, I saw a lot of gravel mowers and, and, uh, and, uh, log jams that were doing significant bank damage.
Yeah, or a bad problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, anyway, yeah, one thing happened, all the paperwork's not done, but we're probably gonna be coming back and looking for twenty-one thousand dollars, you know, in the, the cash balance, so our twenty-five percent.
Where are we gonna come, I mean, what is that gonna come out of this, the, I mean?
Well-
We gotta figure out how much of a flood we're gonna take out of that.
Yes, you do.
I think you can do the weather, it should come out on the rainy day, though.
Well, as, as joking is, in, in joking aside, though, Mark, I, uh, when I looked at the budget, that's about the only place I see the full amount. Any thoughts from the council on that, you know?
I, I wasn't truly just joking, I mean-
I know, but, yeah, honestly, you're looking at it.
Well, I don't remember, but we, Tom, if they ever had a minute, put my, uh-
Nine hundred thousand right now, but most of that goes to paving, doesn't it?
Uh, well, for, there's five for, five, five for that million for the, for the-
Bypass, you still got that land that-
But, but, you know, we're getting ready in a quarter or whatever. But if, if you were sad, but, that's a place we're in. I'll be coming out of there.
We've appropriated what, we afford that bypass five hundred fifty-seven thousand, five hundred?
Five hundred.
And our estimate's gonna be below that, isn't it?
Yep, twenty or something.
I don't know, I wouldn't be holding it.
Yeah. You've still got three suits pending.
Yeah.
Ray Denny has a balance of eighty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven, and the only thing I was showing budgeted out of that is thirty-seven thousand for the Williams property. I mean, that would be forty-five, I mean, I'm there with it, I mean, that's the, the money that goes-
Not to confuse a lot of things.
We've got to raise that, how many years does that show up?
I've got some, I'll give you that, I've got some information.
As far as our money needs, we've got to keep in mind this insurance deal. Even though we've only got three hundred thousand, we don't know what that final deal's gonna be at the end. We know what we've done, we know what we was at with that number, but it's gonna-
That's the serious thing, I can show you.
Go over that, and I know we're looking at all these funds right now for all these monies to go here, to go there, this twenty-one thousand, these different things, but we've just got a lot of need out there in different areas. And, uh, maybe between Michelle and I and another, I was gonna be off a little bit tonight, and other business, uh, about getting started on the budget hearings coming up. We can save that for July, or we can set and establish what we're gonna do there as far as setting our timeframes. Uh, maybe you'll know what we got.
Do we know what the timeframe's on?
I mean, and I'm gonna assume they're gonna be the same as last year.
Oh, yeah.
Definitely, no.
But it's when we told them last year.
Can we, can we tentatively set that? I mean, I, I know we might have to change it, but, um... If we what, if we did the fifteenth, sixteenth, or seventeenth?
Of August?
Of August, tentatively, would that, can everybody check their schedule and just see about that? If the Wednesday, Thursday, Monday?
I'll have to check if the, make sure the room-
What is the states' name, Mark?
Well, I'm just looking at the middle.
Fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth.
That's about the time we did it last year, unless there's a dramatic change in the schedule from state, then that oughta be a good time.
I mean, worse that will happen is I'll have to advertise the budget, the whole shebang before it passes. That's the worst that will happen.
I'm agreement for those days. We've got our-
I mean, we don't have to agree to it tonight, but if, if everybody can come up with that and be good.
Yeah, maybe we can just set it up late tonight, and then everybody can look at, and then in July, we can do that.
And the project is completely done, and it took as many as five track hoes in there, and two, uh, track in loads in there, and, uh, several personnel, and then did a job.
Okay, if there's no other businesses to take along, I'm gonna move to the audience, John, you got anything?
Um, I've just got some information I asked there, get from the, and things that leases and things that we owe money on, just so we have, you know, some finances. Okay. Williams property. Was bought in two thousand ten for a hundred sixty-six thousand eight fifty-six.
Oh, I know that. I thought it was the rare one, now.
No, well, wait a minute, I'm sorry. We, that, that is what we borrowed, you're right.
Yeah, yeah.
But we, uh, this is what we financed, the one plus sixty-six, eight fifty-six, and after we pay our June fifteenth, on a rainy day, we'll still owe a hundred and three, and this amortizes out till June fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, is the last payment. Um... And it's... Okay, two thousand and... Uh, let's see, about two hundred and three thousand seven fifty-nine. And that was back in... First payment was June fifteenth, two thousand and nine. World had, we have this... The payments are twenty-three thousand nine five dollars. Of course, that's already in the general fund, and that's... We currently, we will, we will owe sixty-six thousand one fifty-nine now to, to make the June fifteenth payment.
So, that twenty-three thousand, aren't they paid already?
No, it's, uh, semi-annual.
Is it, what do you, you owe the semi-annual to?
Uh... Yes. Okay, this phone system. January first, two thousand seven. Original cost was two hundred and seven seven thousand. And we currently owe one seventy-three nine seventeen with a twenty thousand dollar payment due July fifteenth, oh, oh, I was in two thousand, I haven't strapped that. We owe a hundred forty thousand eight seventy-four. And our payment of twenty thousand dollars, which is semi-annual, is July fifteenth. And that's being paid on the team cap. So, when we're budgeting, you know, keep these numbers in mind, that's kinda what happened with this bridge one thirteen.
You can renew your commissioner's budget, make sure those numbers are covered in that budget, where you consent to it.
And that's, and then the other thing we need to remember is, we need, we still don't have a hospital Medicare reimbursement, but they just told us, just on the high end, just a figure, maybe a hundred thousand.
Well, that's a lot better than we thought.
Yeah, yeah, we started at one point five million.
I know, we, and then we got down to about four hundred.
Yeah.
Result that was huge.
Anything, Michelle, that missed out of the, I mean, there's, anything else that, think of that?
We had the hospital, for example.
Right.
Hospital, now, but I wish we had, I think, four, three, four, five, and that's for sure.
The least paid.
Least paid on the hospital.
Yeah, I made a payment today for a lot of that.
But that's a big war, too, on that.
They're finishing the, uh, burn, I asked you about, you know, who's spending it, but that's still part of, that's the original, it's still part of it. And that was, that was that extra thir- thirty that we had to do to get the flat part done.
So, that's all again, with the thirty added on, was the annual, two hundred.
It was like, it was one, it was one seventy-nine, I believe, plus a third, okay, somewhere.
Yeah. Two forty, so.
Yeah. And then the, uh-
Thirteen.
The phone systems amortized out till July two thousand fifteen, is the last payment. And that's, that's our, you know, long-term debt.
Well, like I said, when you owe your budget, do you need to make sure provisions are made to cover those, when you present them? Marsha, you have anything? That's random, would you like to explain the good news to the partner members?
What good news?
It looked like they had news to make, man.
He does.
It looks to me like we're down to minus forty-two in this column, it used to be a hundred forty-two.
It's slowly dwindling down. Uh, first, first thing I'd like to, to say, I'm sure everybody's aware that Lester got hurt.
Yeah.
He's doing fairly well, we're supposed to do surgery, second surgery on his leg tomorrow. Uh, it's bruised his pancreas, and it's causing some problems as far as eating and drinking. And that's been more of a concern than, than his leg getting crushed. But, uh, you know, after he's home. And as far as the park, uh, our memorial weekend was, uh, told me that there was more people out there than there's ever been to the park for a memorial weekend. The annual campers said they've never seen the likes of, of people. They had a real good turnout, uh, they had music and bouncers and...
And they like to help people out, or...
Yeah, this up and down. Yeah. Just, I was looking for you to show up. Uh, last month, I opened a hornet's nest, I guess, uh, in trying to find a way to, to do away with this past debt. And, and from all the conversation tonight, it's, it's, it no means that the town have any money. Uh, I had suggested that maybe we looked into trying to sell some of our timber to help with the debt. We're, we voted to do that, uh, Mr. Worley was the only one that voted against it, and I had, he's gonna have his time later. You know, I don't want, you know, some, some people are, you know, beaten and banged in the town prior like they do. But I wanna assure people that we're not wanting to go in there and, and cut it down like a paper mill. I wanna assure them that if we were to do something like that, that forever tree we take out will plant fast, you know? We need to get out of debt for our own reasons, I mean, for... So psychologically, when we do have functions like he did over Memorial Weekend, that it's helping for him instead of the man who made all this money that's gone. And there's, we're still just floating out there as far as, uh, well, the electric, that would be one of our key points that we, when we finally do get above the red, that we need to look into grants to get the electric switched over to where each individual be just like an apartment. You wanna hook up to the, your trailer up there on the hill, then you go to the electric company, you pay the deposit for the meter, and every month, you pay the electric. That way, we don't have to worry about how much air conditioning they're using, and how much heat they use in the winter. Now, this year, we didn't have as big a problem with it because they, the, people worked with us as far as shutting down their, their trailers and things, and, and so we didn't have the regular electric bills like we have had in the past.
You would have that put in their name?
It would be.
Right.
The electric would be in their, their name, they'd be just like, uh, at a park.
He cut off, they didn't...
Yeah. And, and then the plumbing's the same way, the plumbing's the same way, the, the fresh water, if you, you know, you're on top of that hill, and somebody's taking a shower down there, you get three or four people going in there, and then that water pressure is getting so bad, uh, you know, a lot of people think that the water tower, you know, should help with that. But the water tower was initially built for fires. It wasn't really built to make it for the, the users that are at the park. It was a backup in case there was a forest fire, so that they, you know, heaven forbid, they have to go someplace to, to haul water. So we've got that to look at in the future, too. But, you know, the, the tree deal, uh, I'm not saying we're doing it, but we're gonna look into it.
Are you working with commissioners as far as laying out a plan?
Well, like I said, we just discussed this at our last meeting.
Okay.
Theirs will be in the morning. And that's, that's working on that.
Where are you looking to have a forester come in and lock the trees?
There, there were three different people that Lester named, I asked Lester to be in charge of that. I, that's gonna get way late a little bit, but he's still got the three names. And they would be regular foresters, come in. Uh, it's not gonna be open to Tom, Dick, and Harry, if you own a chainsaw, come down, start cutting. Uh, it's, it's gonna be a circular cut, you know, or, you know, a, a selective cut is what they call it. Uh, another thing I thought, since, since it drew everybody's attention, you know, oh, my God, my trees, you know? I think it would be nice to say, and I use the example, uh, let's say we have ten trees, and they're worth a thousand dollars. Okay, each tree's worth a hundred bucks. If you don't want me to cut that tree, make me a check afterwards, you gotta park some grass for a hundred dollars for you to save that tree. If, if the community thinks enough of the park, if, if the community thinks enough of the park, then they need to work with us also. No, we don't really wanna cut all, all the trees down, and we're not gonna cut all of them.
You're gonna be very selective in conversations that I have.
Very selective.
Any other comment, man? I'll be with you in just a second.
That, that's the only thing, like, I want everybody to realize that it's not, it's not that we really wanna do this, but we've been a year and a half trying to get some loophole, and yeah, we're with with it. We're with with it, and we're with with that really hard, thanks to Drummond.
What I say here tonight on this report, you guys are doing an excellent job down there as far as bringing these numbers down in the last year and a half. And I know there could be some floats out there, and this number could go back up, or this number could go down. But this is huge compared to that hundred forty-two we was a year and a half ago. This is huge.
Yeah.
So it's an excellent job.
Fifty-five thousand, that old fund is never gonna be fixed.
Unless we do a little rate increase to take it out. But if we do that, we have to do that tonight. All right, anything else, Ken?
I think I'm fine, thank you, appreciate it.
Well, do you got anything?
Hi.
Hello.
I'll be secretary, everybody. We're on you now.
Hi, my name's Eric Worley, as far as you know, I'm also on the park board, vice president. At the last park, we, we had some pretty intense conversations going on, uh, and they made a motion, and they voted that I come here and that I talk to y'all, uh, about some of the, the financing situation we all have. One of the things that they talked about, I think they brought it over a year ago, was freezing that debt and letting us pay on it. Gradually, it was a problem. Uh, right now, the board's kind of divided. There's a group down there that's wanting to log some trees out, and there's a group that's not. Uh, I feel myself personally, that we're cutting that debt down. Uh, we're in that, we're going in that direction. Uh, we don't need to do something drastic for a short-term fix, because it's a huge problem. There's no way you cut trees without making a mess. It's not possible. The trees we're talking about on the hill, this seat, you can't walk up. No way to do it without taking down the integrity of the park, the beauty of the park, what people go there for. My great grand, my great grandpa, my grandpa helped start that park, and I'll be a part of it. First of all, we as a board, we can't make that decision to cut those trees. We don't know. Tim, they don't find that out of the board and the commissioners. We don't know, the board is not following those trees. Those decisions are left to commissioners and other people.
And I think that was the reason for the comment I made about working with the commissioners in conjunction with that.
We vote all day long, we can't sell.
I think total agreement. I, I'm just looking for a solution to get out of.
What's your solution, Mr. Worley?
I think we're already doing it, you know, I think we're already doing it. If you look at the numbers, we've not had a negative month since we took over that park. We did it as a group.
The thing of...
We don't, I, I think I didn't talk for your time, I appreciate my part.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, we're doing it. It's, it's happening. Look at the numbers, the numbers don't lie. The numbers are right. We've not had a negative month since we've been there, since Jerome's been there, since we've been there. Numbers don't lie. Why do something drastic to the integrity of the park? It's a destination, people go there for the whole experience. Why take down any trees to help pay on a debt that we're already paying on, we're already doing? Our only handicap is that it's safe. If it wasn't there, would we be here? We wouldn't.
So you guys still functioning as a board, still fucking as a board, still working out the deals as a board?
I don't see that we're not, no, I mean, we have many other meetings since, since the last one.
I say that as a board, we're working together, that comes to a reason for your, for your issues. Do you have anything else, Eric, I'm sorry?
Well, it, it's just, I, they, they, as I say, some people were at the board meeting last week, if you go on Ronnie's website and watch it, said some pretty bad stuff about the council, and that they wasn't taking action, and they wasn't doing anything.
Well...
You know, and, and, and my opinion.
You know the nice thing about reading those things in the paper?
Well, it was pretty boring.
Well, I understand, but here's the deal. I understand people's frustration sometime about things and the money and, and the, the deal. I don't take everything so personal myself, I can only speak for myself. I have to look at why somebody, man, said something, try to work my way through it, as how this comment was made, what was in its intent, and try not to get too flustered about, so I come back with the same rage or rash of rage, I try to think my way through these things. So I understand some of the frustrations as some of the people has posed. I know Jerome is very concerned, from his point of view, that he's making a lot of that way, and doing an excellent job. But he's, he's a little frustrated because he can't take the money, he feels like he's making and is making, and put it towards something constructive until he gets this other debt, or you as a board, and that's what your function is down there. And you guys have done a great job of doing that, I can't say you haven't, you have. I think if you keep your heads cool, kind of think through your comments before you make them, and work together, you'll come up with a resolve for the issues down there, and we'll get where we want. I understand the part about maybe wanting to lock some of the locks, if it's done in a very professional way, and also understand your comment about, you know, it's hard to cut a tree down and not leave a hole in the canopy.
You gotta do a road to get there.
Right. Understand those things. But I guess the thing I'm looking at also, I'm not sure, but I think they've logged that area, some area of the park before, maybe twelve years ago or something.
Not, not in the visible areas.
Well...
You're, you're talking over hills?
Right.
And back away from the side.
The way I'm assured, is this area gonna, get an area not seen?
The side side of the lake.
This is the hole.
And the law.
Figured it was the beauty of the park, and first thing you see.
Nothing on the hillside that faces the lake.
Yes.
It's the whole hillside, this.
You're...
Standing at the restaurant, looking across the water, we're talking about taking some of the trees on that hillside where nobody can walk through anyway, and it ain't like they're gonna strip that off.
I understand, this one, true. So what I'm gonna say to you all in closing, with Mark's talking here, just like, you guys need to work with us just a little bit on your own, and I understand your comments here tonight, and I appreciate the comments made here tonight. But I think you guys just need to work together as a board to see where your resolve's at, and that's something we need to be passing judgment on.
I, I, I agree on the logging part, but what I'm, I'm, I'm not here for the logging part, 'cause I know that's something we don't have any control over regardless. But what I'm here for is to solve the debt problems we have, that's why I'm here, I don't like the logging.
I, I thought that this council instructed the park board to pay off the debt at a rate of thirty thousand dollars a year. And once they had paid the thirty thousand, then whatever else came in, they could use for other projects.
See, they're not, we had a...
We agreed to it.
We, we have talked about, let me, let me wade in here, and I just wanna wade shallowly, because I don't, it's late already. Number one, and, and I, I'll make, I'll make this comment based on what I've read. Number one, the council hasn't, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, not throwing stones, but we've not made any demands about this debt. Quite frankly, as long as the state stays off our back, we all know it's out there, but we've not came to the board and says, you've gotta do this this way.
Well, it's fees that somebody's doing.
Okay, well, listen, listen to me. The council hasn't said to the board, this has gotta be paid in the next three weeks, the next six months, the next two years. We've never said that, and it's not a resolution. Now, yeah, we all in this room ought to be concerned that some point, some audit state board council comes down here and says, you got this big negative fund, county, we really don't care about council, about park board, we care about county. The county's got a negative fund, that fund's gonna be cured right now, 'cause that's the way they'll say it. That auditor's gonna come into Sarah's office, and she's gonna say, you got a negative fund. When I leave here at close business today, that fund's not even gonna be in the negative. Start transferring money. Period, done, over with, see you later. Now, until that day happens, yeah, we've been having some conversations in the past, and yes, Mark, there was talk about, let's put something in writing to show when that auditor comes down, yeah, we know it's here, and we're trying to work on it, and trying to have it. Have we done any resolution to that effect? No, I don't believe we've ever done a resolution to that effect. We've talked about it in general terms, but I don't think we've ever said, be it hereby resolved, we know we got a debt, we know we got a rent fund, and here we went, this is the way we're gonna try and tackle it. Okay? So maybe we do, but, again, I, I mean, and I understand the emotional deal about, from maybe the board's standpoint, about we got this big debt, we gotta take care of it, we gotta take care of it, we gotta take care of it.
Well, that's not just for us, it's for the park management.
Well, and, and you're...
You know, that, that's the vert, there's the vert, on the board, we just show up, just like, y'all are here, wanna, wanna deal. He's the one dealing with this one, and he can't pay bills, and it, we can't pay electric, everything's there.
No one has said, okay, I guess, I guess if your manager doesn't think that he can operate the park with income generated now, because he's gotta take that income and pay it on debt.
Right, there is.
I don't think this council has ever tried to convey that to him. And if we have, then we, then, then that, then, then he has perceived that incorrectly.
Mark, but every time he brings money, it's, he's got a...
It goes in one fund.
Yeah, it goes into one fund, and he can't keep any excess to do, we can't even buy it, we can't buy it.
I don't think he fixed that.
He's gotta be paying...
Our office is not stopping any bills being paid.
That's right, he's gotta be paying his electric bill.
Right, and it, it's, we're constantly dealing with the negative budget, if it was froze, and we could see where we're at, and we can mandate, or we can...
You're seeing where it's at right now, of the fact that it's a hundred forty-one thousand dollars a year and a half ago.
Right, and that's gonna, that's gonna do this road a foot.
And, and it's...
And it's going to, yes.
And, and it just makes his job like thirty times harder than it should be. You know, you can't, like, for instance, we had someone who was gonna donate a thousand dollars to set up a van and, and do stuff. Well, if they did, that went for our debt, that, we couldn't write a check, in theory, to that guy, and hand in that thousand dollars to, to pay for the van. It, it went toward our debt, that thousand didn't go to pay for that van.
If, he, he declined, he declined after we asked him to pay the park, but that's, you know...
We, we had an insurance deal on the back, so we couldn't pay the contractor, that went towards the debt, you know?
Did the contractor get paid?
Yeah, but...
Okay.
Then it got paid.
The contractor, the contractor was me, but, oh, no, no, we didn't get paid.
Shouldn't a key cap, fund cap in there? Hey, you got key cap, buddy, we've been burning it, you are...
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't, yeah. I, I mean, I respect what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, I guess my feeling is, I've gotta sit down with, I gotta sit down with Michelle and look at something.
I mean, it's not about, I guess the wording is not, it's not like if you're not, like, we're, we went on a bill, 'cause we can't, I... because we can't pay a band, but that's not the right, it's just, you're constantly running a business in there.
I mean, if we can't have a fundraiser, if, if we have a cookie sale, then we have to give all our money for our cookie sale to our debt.
Who's, stop right there, who's code of that?
Every, every time Jerome takes money up there, he sold some scrap metal. You don't think that we can use that? It goes out.
It goes into the park.
Okay, but stop right there, stop right there. This Jerome did go and say, I'm gonna set up a band for Memorial Day.
Well, the band, they, we had a band.
No, don't, don't worry about it. I'm using that as an example. Or let's use the bathrooms, okay? I sold three thousand dollars worth of scrap metal. I deposited the money. Now I'm gonna fix the bathrooms, and it's gonna cost forty-six hundred.
They don't get that opportunity, right? They don't get an opportunity. You, you pay the bill, the money they give you, and why does that go back to that old debt?
No, that's the point. No one's, I think that's where the big issue is. No one's coming and saying, now we want that three thousand dollars to come back out so we can go pay, go, go fix the rest of it. And, and I don't know that anybody on this council, and I'm not trying to defend us against you, I'm, I'm simply saying, I, I don't think it's the council's perspective tonight, or has been, to say, no, you can't do that. That twenty-six extra dough, or that three thousand has to stay in there to give us that debt.
Here's what I'd like. A year ago, when we, when I first took on the board, and then we went and got a new manager, the commissioners agreed to bring a representative to the park board, and county council, I believe, agreed to bring someone there. I think it came to one meeting, and, and we never had anyone from the council again.
I, I don't think, George Brown? No, he's talking about actual board.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, well, he's...
Yeah.
He, he doesn't appear?
Well, I think he's had some schedule. We've all missed times, you know, the scheduling issues come up with different things. But I would like to, I would like to ask that maybe someone from this board come down to the park board meeting, the next meeting, and help explain this to the, the rest of us, our board, and to the rest of the audience to deal with on a, on a monthly basis, and get some clarity of where we're at. Because I'm confused, and I'm...
Let me just say.
You know, I'm confused.
As bad as it sounds, it needs to run like it did before. We're, we're always in the red, but they got their bills paid, and if they needed extra money for another project, they took their money and they spent it.
That's just hard for guys who run businesses, the concept.
Well, it's a good idea, it's just a good...
You gotta let it die and run like a business, Eric. There, there's the first, there's the first thing you gotta work.
At least the wise, the reason why it's successful is because you got guys that are running businesses, and that's why we're making money.
What I would like, I mean, I feel the same for, I hope for the rest of them, is that you spend a little bit less than you bring in, so that constantly, there is something going to pan off the old debt.
It is, right now, it is.
But if you gotta pay your government a year and a half of this...
Well, you're gonna win ninety thousand a year. Well, we can only dream.
We tried to, we tried to put up the schedule in there, and it was gonna, it was gonna surface and look like a loan in there, and I think we had problems with the way...
We had some problems in that.
With the way it looked like, but I just wanted to put it up, that you had a, a goal of paying thirty thousand dollars worth of debt a year, every year. You know, and having some increments you'd have to pay it off. So you had a plan. But the way the government financing is set up, it won't allow us to establish it that way. So we've got this line item that's got this thing, but it's an in and out, a can.
Right.
Now, if you put more in than you take out, then you're always reducing the debt. And I know it's a psychological problem to see this negative number sitting there when you know that you're doing a profitable business in there, but you are slowly making that figure smaller.
We...
But our mechanism here that we have to work with will, will not allow us to put in an increment of payments in there, but you use the excess. Yeah, it just doesn't work that way. Hey, it's frustrating. Believe me, it's frustrating to not be able to work it that way. But we have to work within the plan, and there's a way the government financing.
I, I understand that. It's just, we can't do this other improvements, there's other things that we like now. If the money that we're making in profit, we're paying off old debt that has nothing to do with us.
Just like I bought a business and bought its name, and I accumulated debt, I gotta pay that debt, that's why I'm here for. You know, it's all in how I bought the business. You know, unfortunately, the one thing you're gonna learn, yes, it doesn't work like a business, and it's the hardest thing in the world. And I'm gonna speak for myself, Dave, I'm not gonna throw you in here right now.
I think the council, you're correct. I think that park can run like it can run like it is, to be self-sufficient. Everyone's...
But we, we think it can too. I think your dog is already financed by the balance.
It can't be a money business, and it can't, uh...
Well... Well, the financing doesn't. Here, let me, let me say it this way. If, and, and maybe I shouldn't say it completely, because it, it would be, it's actually a council, council decision. But I would think, it, okay, you're gonna, you're having a budget. Okay, you're gonna have a park board, a park budget. Right, you, you've got...
I mean, I mean, they turn one, they turn the...
Okay.
They make one.
You'll make one.
Here, you should be, yeah, already got paid in.
It hasn't been turned, I guess.
Okay.
That's gonna be done this month.
Really?
Yeah, okay. So, you're gonna have that budget. Now, you're gonna operate on that budget. But if you as a board say, we've got the budget we've turned in for, for tax purposes, tax rate purposes, but here's another budget we have. And that budget has in it paying thirty thousand dollars of this debt, or twenty-five thousand dollars of this debt. And, and that's, that's a, that's a line item, or a goal, or a, a, the way we wanna track this. Okay? And once we pay in twenty-five thousand dollars above what else our budget shows that is our light bill, and our water bill, and all the other bills we have, once we've hit that twenty-five thousand, we're gonna take the rest of that money, and we're gonna start doing stuff. I don't think anybody on this council would, would say, don't even pay me that. I, I don't know if you wanna just keep that in a ledger book, okay? I don't know if you wanna keep that on a computer program that Rhonda showed you how to set up. But, I mean, I think the general consensus of this council is that you have, if you, you're make some payment towards that debt somewhere between twenty and forty thousand dollars, this council will be tickled pink with that. And yeah, it'll take two or three years to pay that off, but it'll get done.
Your expectations are lower than ours.
Well, that's fine, okay? I'm just trying to address this problem, and I know that, that, yeah, everybody who has a debt doesn't like to have that, and it emotionally weighs on them.
Eric, what's your excess? I mean, what, what do you all contribute? You all, you all came to our commissioners meeting, and you were basically breaking, even not including the ninety thousand of the county picks, remember when we had that meeting? So, and we've never really figured out from there, I mean, how much, how much more are you making than you're paying out?
Right.
Does anybody know that?
It's a hundred thousand dollars for the last year and a half.
Is that it?
This backlog here was one forty-two a year and a half. Go with forty-two right now, so apparently. And that may go up and that may go down.
We're self-sufficient.
Where the, where, where the line is.
Yeah, so we're speaking with it. We, we, it has to go up. Every time we pay a bill, it goes up.
Yeah, yeah.
It, it has to go up, because it's one pot.
But what you're doing is, you're turning in more money than you're writing out. So you are doing exactly what we're saying that you need to do automatically. And, and at some point, when you hit, what I'm saying, at some point, when you hit twenty to forty thousand dollars, that, this council will probably be happy for that, for this year, for that to be done, and then you take the rest of that money and go, go fix your factory.
What I'm getting at is, we've done a hundred thousand dollars in about a year. We're self-sufficient. We didn't have a debt there, we only get ninety thousand.
You've done more, you have paid your bills, plus you have paid off a hundred thousand dollars in a year and a half.
Correct, we're self-sufficient.
So if you take twenty months, and six months, and eighteen, and divide that into your hundred, that's how much profitability you'll be at each and every month, maybe not each and every month, but that's what you're averaging every month, is that amount that you paid this down, okay? So you're doing exactly what you guys are saying you want to do.
I just have one other comment.
Yes, sir.
I don't see there's anything wrong with harvesting a tree down there. They all have a natural lifespan, and, you know, have a forester walk through the property and see if there's something there that can be taken down without...
They would have issued a forester.
So if we go by their, by their vote, they, they would have issued state forestry. Well, it doesn't have to be a state person, it's just somebody knows tree.
That's the same thing I'm gonna think. I have no problem if they're gonna do it right. Don't want to just...
I think there's nobody that has had a discussion about this logging deal that hasn't professed that it do it in a very professional way with the least intrusion. You know, and I think that's something you guys need to work in collaboration with.
Maybe they'll come off that hillside, and maybe come off some other place, but, you know, find out where the trees are.
That needs to be, there's need, need to be cut. There's trees sometimes that needs...
There's certain kind of trees that start going the other way.
And one of them is...
I don't know what happened there. Beach and... We had bald eagle.
It's messing down. They'll start going the other way.
I think most people lose them anyway. There's times you lose a tree. If it's worth ten thousand dollars, you're gonna lose that tree. You might as well cut it. And I think we should demand, I mean, we should be happy if they're trying to find a way to pay this off. But they're to the point that they're saying they can't make improvements that they feel they need to make for the park because they have to pay the bill, and that's what needs to be explained, so that they can do the lectures and what they need to do.
The pressure we took on this board to get us out of debt, and we, we still continue to deal with that pressure. Even though we had different views of how to do things at times, we all have the same central goal of getting rid of this debt. You and the commissioners put that pressure on us. I'm just asking, I found a way to put, put that debt over here, let's, let's run with it. Where to make some money? I can, I can, I can always start with the water.
There is non-reversable liabilities. I mean, basically, you got your liabilities, and you got your assets, so like, is that not over?
In the non-reverting fund, that's good.
Bottom line.
Okay, any further comment on that? Rhonda?
Um, I spoke with Ron Hiddings and David Brown last week, and showed him what Google Apps can do, especially the calendar. And I think, if I remember correctly, David Brown said, well, I, I can do that. And so he wants to go ahead and set up an account, it'll come in, you guys will discuss it tomorrow morning, and go ahead and set up an account for the county, where everyone, the boards and agencies would have their own accounts, their own calendars, and all of that kind of stuff. And I volunteered, and Sam Williams actually interested in it also. So if it goes through tomorrow, or what have you, then I'm going to set up the account through Google. It's a Google account and, and what have you. And I've got papers to basically what I'm gonna be doing if I do it at all. So I'm not gonna be here tomorrow. Okay, so. But if you have any questions, let me know. I don't know, I don't know. So you have any questions about what it is, how it's set up, what kind of things are involved? I've also got a sandbox, what's called a sandbox, set up on Indiana Proud. If you want a, an account, I'm going ahead and want you to get an international play for programs in a, which I think is sandbox like Eric. Now, sure, okay.
Eric, do you know who you're there?
Oh, yeah, I know. Not this, not this one, not this one. I'm holding this positive sandbox. I'll be someplace else.
Is that all you have on that?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. How about yourself?
I got nothing.
If there's no further comment, who's going to visit with the commissioners tomorrow at the meeting? Is anybody open to do that?
I'm just a farmer, I don't work, so...
Do you have a big one, make it?
No, not the one.
I, I'll think, I, I need to make some remarks on the blue rose, and that's all.
All right, if there's no further comment, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Close some.
Second?
Yes.
All those members out?